Good to go.
Well, there we go, okay. Uh, call me in order, stand you pledge of agents. I pledge of agents to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Does not look like we have any public discussion here, so. Can go into approval of the agenda in minutes. Is there a motion to that effect?
Someone.
Okay, motion by Josh, is that second?
I'll second.
Um, any discussion on the motion? Uh, roll call vote please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Okay, um, next up is the claims.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll sign them later.
Okay.
Um. Is there any motion for the claims? So everyone had a chance to review. Make a motion to approve the claims. Okay, do you have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the motion or the claims? Roll call vote please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carries, Dan, you're up for monthly update for VA.
Okay. Well, good morning, I'm assuming that my email made it through to everybody, hopefully.
Yep.
Okay. Well, November shaped up, I had thirty-four calls, uh, sixty-five messages between email, voicemail, and US mail. Uh, had thirty-five walk-ins, twenty-two scheduled appointments. One that I did out of, uh, out of the office. We did one veterans transport and we were able to get four sets of hearing aids repaired. Uh, currently tracking eleven-hundred-and-ninety-three system records. Uh, I have forty-eight claims in the VA system presently, five that are waiting a decision by VA. Uh, seventeen that I'm working on. Uh, one supplemental claim and one health, uh, healthcare enrollment for the month. Uh, also on November thirtieth, under training, we completed our, uh, District Five training over at the Election Center. Uh, that was very beneficial, we had twelve attendees. Think we got down about a quarter to five, uh, that day for block construction. Uh, also, we tried something new, uh, as a state association. And we tried to do three days of new VSO hire training. And we did that through MST remotely across the state. And it worked out pretty well, had twenty-four students statewide. Uh, did not have anything in the way of outreach scheduled. Uh, continuing to update my office policy and procedures. Uh, I've got a draft that I'll be giving to my commissioners in January for their re- their review and their questions. Um, continuing to work on my, uh, budget draft for this upcoming cycle. Uh, the commissioners have been introduced to that, we chewed on it a little bit last week Thursday. And we'll finish that up prior to, uh, presentation. Um. My presentation, as I understand it, subject to change, will be January fifth at, uh, eleven o'clock to all of you on, on my department budget. Uh, end of year metrics for the department, still working on that, I'll be closing that out here. Should have a good snapshot for you, uh, early next month, once I've rolled everything up. Um. As far as, uh, claims for the month of November, again, we had, uh, about twenty-one-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, uh, for, for November, and then the retroactive benefits, just a little bit under four thousand. Retroactive benefits being those to get the, the claimant caught up on overdue, uh, benefits. Uh, year-to-date monthly awards, looking at, uh, just about forty-nine thousand in retroactive benefits at about ninety-nine. And then, of course, the ad hoc reports, which I'm continuing to work on. Um, found out last week, currently VA's one million claims behind. So there's their backlog, that explains the incredible slowdown and, and lack of activity there. And then yesterday, uh, when I was trying to submit two claims, they had an EPI failure, Derek probably knows what that is. Uh, but in any case, everything quit working, so I. You know, the last hour was nothing but filing and putting stuff away, because there was nothing I could do to, to upload documents. Um. Just as a side note, uh, looking at the number of veterans that we have in the community, and potentially how that's going to impact us in the future. I know in particularly with some of our, uh, Reserve and National Guard. Uh, there are some organizations coming up on what is called the patch chart for National Guard Bureau, which means they're in the rotation to be called up for po- possible potential deployment, Josh, I'm sure you're familiar with that. Um, it sounds like that could happen. And if it does, potentially that could impact a lot of communities. On average, generally, if a, if an organization deploys typically, it affects about twenty-three to twenty-four communities in Iowa. So those first timers that are new to the service or have been in less than six years could potentially end up with, you know, veteran status here within the next fourteen to eighteen months, which again increases the, the workload for all the county VSOs, keeping track of that. Um, also with, uh, with my report, I gave you, uh, my schedule, talked with the commissioners. This is for our Thursday meetings every month. Uh, there's a couple dates there, April is tentative, depending upon when the, uh, spring conferences for our state association. But I just planned that, uh, and I guess we'll, we'll modify that once, once I find out. Same, same principle for October. We don't have any definitive dates yet, the IDBA has not let us know. Um, and then what I did is, uh, the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs Quarterly Meeting Highlights, it's about twenty-five pages. So I grabbed the big stuff and put it on too. Uh, and that's the other enclosure there for your reading enjoyment. It gives some, uh, updates on community-based outpatient centers that are being built. Uh, one recently here in Waterloo, they've got some other ones in Galesburg, Decorah, uh, Marshalltown and Carroll. Uh, there's also some veteran status as it applies to Iowa in terms of, uh, as an example, Iowa's adult population, seven point seven percent are veterans. So there's, there's some interesting, uh, metrics there for your review. Um, December's been very busy with some of this remaining weather without the snow. I've seen a lot more folks come into the office, it's more conducive for them to travel. So, uh, I've seen a lot of folks coming in. Um, unfortunately, we've lost a few veterans, uh, like I was sharing with you here previously. Uh, lost another veteran here to suicide just about three days before Thanksgiving. Uh, did not see that one coming. And, uh, so I'm waiting for when the VA, uh, reschedules its, uh, QPR training, which is a question persuade and refer, is to kind of help try and identify that. Um, generally speaking, I kind of thought about, because I was working with this individual veteran, and I thought, well, was there something there that I missed that I didn't see? And, you know, really thought pretty hard about that, and I, I couldn't identify anything. And I felt a little better in the fact that those that investigated those circumstances said generally, those that are closest to the veteran's immediate family or, or friends generally won't always pick up on those cues. And there was no indication that I saw with the short period of time that I spent with him that that was going to happen, but. It's unfortunate, because technically, even though they talk about the twenty-two a day, the Iowa staff for veterans is much higher. It's right around thirty, so. Um, there's that, there's the whole argument about, uh, access to firearms. Uh, have been doing some studies on that. Typically, women veterans are less risk than men. Uh, men, if they decide to do that, the chosen weapon is a firearm. So then there's this discussion about access. And there is one veteran who took that to heart, uh, reading an article about him, he actually started a business where basically veterans and, and, and people in general, if they want to, they can get the firearms, take them to his business. He writes up a little contract, they pay him a nominal deposit fee, he stores it there for them. So, the di- the, the thought being that that temptation of access to a firearm in the home isn't there, they're not giving it up. It's an agreement between, uh, the veteran or the individual, the businessman. And, uh, basically, they can go and sign it in and sign it out whenever they deem necessary. So it's making an impact in his community, I thought it was kind of a neat idea, something I hadn't heard of, you know, so. With that, subject to your questions, that's really all I've got. Meeting went very well with the commissioners, uh, last Thursday. And, uh, just trying to get them to focus in on my budget, I don't see anything too glaring. Uh, one of the, one of the questions that I'm working with Derek on is, my understanding is that whole copier thing is, that contract and stuff is going to be, uh, out the window here this, within this next year, I think because the state was going to try and do away with some of those contract copy services. So I've been talking with Derek about getting a printer for my office that I can use as a copier scanner fax. And, and that will take care of that issue should that copy contract go away, so. That's really kind of one of the. Budget-wise, that's really kind of one of the main things that I'm looking at. Any questions that you might have?
Thanks, Dan, any questions from the board?
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Eric Chris, take care, you guys have a good week.
All right, Ron, you think it's time to retire? Well, that's up next here. Doug, do you have anything you want to say here?
Go ahead and then, uh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Well, appreciate all your years.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
I will, yep, thank you, guys. Go ahead, Ron, just stay right up here a quick bit. Ron started his employment with Cassoot County, if I have everything right, December ninth of two thousand two. So he just celebrated twenty-three years with Cassoot County, or twenty years, twenty-one. Ron has been a very good employee for Cassoot County, I think one of the strongest traits, and Bill will probably agree with me, but Ron got along with everybody. He just, uh, he was able to work with everybody, did his job, uh, helped out with other people. Really, really did a good job, Ron, we really appreciate the years he put in, and we certainly hope that your, uh, your retirement, Jill can put up with you for a little while. Yeah, hopefully. But, uh, no, we hope that your retirement on behalf of the road department myself, just want to, uh, present you with a little appreciation plaque here. And, uh, say thank you for your years. Thank you. Years of work. Appreciate it. Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you, guys, for coming in.
Merry Christmas.
Doug.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't go too far, we're, uh, we'll, we'll be getting the road, road right away here pretty quick.
Yeah, I, I have information.
No, that's fine, I was just telling you, we'll be right, we'll be right up to that.
Um, next up is the amendment to the liquor license. It was in our packet, was there anything specifically you were going to highlight or anything?
No, no, Brittany didn't say anything.
Okay. Any, um, questions or comments from the board, otherwise I'd entertain a motion. Okay, thank you, um, I'll, Roger, Dan, and I'll second it. Any, um.
I always forget that it's not Ray's yours anymore.
No, yeah. Any discussion on the motions, questions on the liquor license, anything? Roll call vote, please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yep.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carries, now we'll see how, like Doug comes back. And then stamp it too. Anywhere?
Yeah, yeah.
There we go.
Yep, see that? Do we want to call Marge, or maybe we can do sixty sub one quick? Yeah, wouldn't hurt. That'll be, uh, short, so you want?
Hey, Marge, they're ready for you. Uh, okay, bye.
Doug's going to walk in now.
I was going to say.
Good morning, yes.
Morning. Ready when you are.
Okay, we do have one request from Interstate Power and Light, uh, to move some power poles. Uh, this work, actually, they called us up last week, and we did give them a verbal to complete this work. So it's already been completed, but, uh, I'd like to go through, uh, the formal approval. Uh, this is up on the state line, and Interstate Power and Light needed to cross US one sixty-nine and put, uh, some power poles in the south right away of five hundred and tenth street. Replace some power poles, and put some other facilities up there. Uh, so I would recommend that the board would go ahead and approve of this, uh, permit twelve forty-four twenty, twenty-three.
Okay, um, I'd make motion to approve, do you have a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? By his roll call vote?
Plath. Jarks.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yep.
Stecker.
Yes, motion carries, yeah, nice. And that was all for construction.
That's all the construction of the road right away. Sign right there, please. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, working on my budget right now for secondary roads, planning and zoning. Soup Waste Management Association, and, uh, in January, we'll get some numbers from Wellmark and be able to start working on that. Uh, the bridge project down by Gutters, uh, they did pour some concrete last week, so there is one pier that has been, uh, the cap has been placed on the pier piling. Uh, they have an abutment driven, and I think they're going to drive another abutment and pour, hope to pour another, the other pier pot, uh, pier cap, uh, this week. Uh, we still have a couple of open positions we're looking at, we're looking for people. Uh, that's really all the road stuff that I have, and then, uh, the ordinance, it is supposed to be published tomorrow in the Sway City and the Bancroft Papers, and Thursday in the Cassoot, uh, County Advance. Uh, so it will be adopted when it's all published. Uh, next week, I will bring a resolution from the board to just acknowledge that it's been adopted, and we will be, uh, getting everything signed, and then it'll get recorded, and, uh, that will be completed.
Okay.
Pretty much all of it.
Sound good, any questions from the board, or anything to Doug? Well. Thanks.
You bet.
Thank you.
Yes, everyone, have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas to you.
Marge, we got commissioners for sixty sub one, that was in our packet and stuff, anything you want to say, otherwise, freeze standard. Okay, um, I'd make a motion to appoint the commissioners, Ken Lubenthal and Rich Rosenmeyer for DD sixty sub one reclass. Would there be a second to that?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
Wactor.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes. Motion carries, um. Marge, anything else you had for us for drainage wise? Nothing too great? Okay. Um. Any questions from our drainage, while we're on drainage, otherwise?
Uh, so you have to prepare a bar request.
Okay.
And, um, just so the board's aware, a while back, we approved a request for, um, riprap and stuff around Mark Lattes House Bridge there.
Yeah.
Um, over by Whittemore, and I think we were in the impression that, from talking to Colin, that they were going to take care of that, and then he was under the impression that we were going to take care of that. So we got that cleared up, and, um, and so we're going to have a contractor on that as quick as we can, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Marge. Um, discussion with our auditor.
Looks like there's some Christmas cards I'm supposed to hand out for you guys to look at.
Okay.
Orrez, do you know what's, what's on the agenda for next week, or?
And Timmy has this graph in there, and I touched just a bit on it, just because I do the claims for the juvenile detention. Um, but I know she's thinking like budget-wise, so, um. It just shows the difference in what the state used to pay compared to what the county used to pay, and now that's what it used to be, and now the state only pays this, and the county pays this amount, so it's a lot, and um, we're actually getting close in our line item on that for the juvenile detention, and so I don't know if she'll have to do a budget amendment on it yet this year, but I, I think she's going to talk about it during budget time too.
So that's actually, that's, yeah, that's actually the chart I had been dealing with, our, um, lobbyist for ISAC on, and that's what I mentioned, um, I think it was last week, that, um. Well, I was at the compensation board meeting, but, um, we had conversations there, and he was meeting with state, um, representatives in the House at that time for working on the discrepancy there, so we are actively trying to get that taken care of, but yeah, the last two years, especially with COVID, it substantially dropped, but that's, that's on the reimbursement side for the facilities, that's not, it's not a direct impact to us immediately. It's a facility-wide impact, so our rates get adjusted based on that for the financials of the organization. But that state funding actually doesn't have a direct impact on our budget immediately, because that's all reimbursement from prior expenses, so.
Did they do anything with DuMonty?
Not yet, nothing has been changed yet, so that's all in the works.
Well, DuMonty may have really used this, do you?
Oh, yeah, that's, and that's one piece of what we're trying to address as far as, um, the funding per bed day, like days of service versus, um, the actual reimbursement formula that they have now, so. Yeah, there, there's several pieces to that puzzle.
Okay, so, looks like, um, next week, the Cassoot County Ag and Fair Board will be here at nine o'clock to discuss their budget request. Um, so will the counties, Cassoot County Soil and Water Conservation, um, there'll be an EMS update. And a general assistance update, like just all of this stuff.
Okay. That's all you got?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jack, you have anything for me? Okay.
Oh, I, I met with Kurt Biesel from Emergency Management in a week, so we'll go. Then we, we talked about the dead zone that we have in radar for weather. And we're definitely in the dead zone. Really covers, really bad, the north part of Cassoot County has nothing really for radar, and southern Minnesota. And it, there was three different proposals, one came from Climate Vision, one came from C-Band Radar. And C-Band Radar would have to be funded by some, something like the radio station, they'd have to put it up. And it's over a million dollars for them, and so they're not going to do it. And to have a real radar band, S-Band Radar is three hundred and fifty million, and that would have to come from the federal government, and that's probably not an option. So Climate Vision is supported by advertising. And they put radar on top of the highest building in several different spots. And it looks like we're going to get Warren, Lorenz, Keister, Minnesota, and in Blackhawk County. And then they will send their information to the National Weather Service. And it will be funded by advertising. So that's probably in the end is going to be what happens, and it won't happen until the spring of twenty-four. And if you'd like to see some of the maps, it's kind of interesting. Well, how many people in Cassoot County, there's fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine that have no radar coverage? So I'll pass that down, and you can flip the page and look at it.
So Chris has brought up that Climate Vision before, um, the, so not only is it advertisement, but they do subscription base, so you can actually subscribe to their radar, um, and you pay a monthly fee, uh, businesses can subscribe to, um, to kind of provide it for their employees and things like that, that's kind of where they get their funding from. So there's no cost to the local governments, or, or, you know, any grants or anything like that, they put it in, and they supply, you know, it's just basically paid for by the subscription. I'm surprised that Climate Vision is going to be able to come in, because, um, when we talked about it, uh, one of our board meetings, they, we're going to have an issue with all the windmills. Um, because they, uh, stated in there that the windmills would cause an issue with, you know, how they can gather the data, um. But I think if they went with the largest one, they, they might be able to do it. But I know that was one of the concerns that they had was, was that we had all those windmills on, especially in the middle area.
You kind of said it, depending on where they cited it, if they could get a water tower that was high enough.
Okay.
And it's, it looked down enough that it wouldn't bother, so.
So you should be able to.
Maybe they'd have that solved.
Hopefully.
But we'll find out, it isn't a sure thing yet.
No, no. And it had, yeah, we discussed it, um, Chris has brought it up a few times, they've kinda met with them. Um, they've also had a, um, a team of, of, you know, the, I think the Humboldt County Emergency Management, a few others were meeting with, um, I wanna say they were, um, Randy Finstrud and, and Chuck Grass, they're trying to get federal funding for it too. So I guess that probably didn't go very far.
They haven't heard yet. Kurt, that's what Kurt said, that they, they're not done researching it yet, but this is probably the option that will end up happening.
Yep. Yeah, I'm sure they'll like that option, you know, less hands-on for them, so.
The radio station was at the meeting and they're really in favor of it because they're, they realize they don't have any really accurate weather predictions and help them.
Yeah, they can't get the information, they don't get the information themselves, so.
Yeah, I know when I talked to Chris, she'd said the same thing with the issues with the wind turbines. But some of that was that they couldn't really even cite them here because it would block it, so that's why some of the other sites around were picked. Because then they thought they could catch us on the edges or whatever. Anything else, Roger?
No, I didn't.
Josh, board meetings?
Um, no, but I did meet with, um, Summit. They did share a lot of good information on their, um, setbacks and stuff like that that they, you know, recommend based on the maps that they're showing. Obviously the maps are not public knowledge because they stated again that it's a security issue, um, but I was happy that they finally allowed us to kinda look at them, um, and just kinda answered some, you know, questions that they really hadn't answered before, um, so it was kinda, kind of a good meeting with them, um. And then, so nine, at six o'clock, we've got the Emergency Management Budget Hearing. Um, followed by the E nine one, after that at seven, so.
Carter? I had no board meetings, but, uh, um, yeah, I also did meet with Summit last Tuesday evening. And, um, I just thought, could I read my, I typed up my notes in a little organized fashion from the meeting. Like to just read them, so you guys can all, I guess, hear what, what they presented to us, um. So, studies presented by Summit Carbon Solutions were done by the HSE, Health and Safety Executive, which is a, a United Kingdom-based organization. Uh, the US Department of Energy was also involved in some of the information and figures in the study. Uh, they used a Canary model, uh, and was used in the studies because it has the ability to calculate a jet release. This is a quote-unquote real world software versus something done in the lab or a wind tunnel. Additionally, they used a flow two D model for terrain aided dispersion modeling to help calculate the effects of rises or drops in surrounding terrain. Uh, the meeting began by discussing the specifics of the study and how they achieved the results on the maps. Two different scenarios, uh, a third-party line strike and a guillotine, guillotine were presented to us, creating two different results based off of the same assumptions. These assumptions based off of, were based off of Iowa averages and included uh, temperature was fifty degrees Fahrenheit, wind speed ten miles an hour, humidity was at sixty-seven percent. Environment was soil with tall grass or crops below the knee, valve spacing twenty miles, valve closure time ten minutes. Pipe location, zero degrees or ground level. Pipe size, twenty inches, pipe wall thickness was a half inch, pipe material was carbon steel. Angle of rupture for the third-party line strike is sixty-seven degrees. Uh, concentration of the CO2 was forty thousand parts per million. And in the fir-, in the first study, the third-party line strike, um, this would be a situation where, for example, an excavator was digging and struck the line, causing it to rupture, assuming a sixty-seven degree angle shooting up in the air. This would be considered a jet release and would shoot roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet up into the air. The substance would never get below the fifty foot mark. In this graph, the plume shows the highest concentration of CO2 ends about a hundred and fifty feet out from the initial upward blast. The moderate concentration ends around the two hundred and fifty foot mark and the lowest concentration ends by the four hundred and fifty foot mark. The risk zone for this is approximately two hundred and thirteen feet from the blast location. This is because the pressure is so great in a pipe, but it launches it far enough up into the air that the majority of the CO2 never reaches ground level. The possibility of this affecting anyone other than the person in the immediate blast area is very low. Study number two is the guillotine, second present, uh, this is where the pipe, due to circumstances such as what happened in Sotarsia, ruptures on its own without any third-party interference. A guillotine rupture is less than one percent of pipeline ruptures, but it is the one to prepare emergency management to handle. Most guillotine ruptures occur after lots of rainfall, washing away the soil around the pipe, which again is what happens in Sotarsia. And the pipe under the stress of its own weight. Uh, the risk area for this type of dispersion is approximately sixteen hundred feet from the blast location. At forty thousand parts per million, a person would have two thousand two hundred eighty-eight minutes or thirty-eight hours to get out at a one percent mortality rate. After the two thousand two hundred eighty-eight minute timeframe, by the time twenty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight minutes or thirty, three hundred and eighty-one hours is up, you would have around a fifty percent mortality rate. Things to note and consider in the testing, uh, the mortality rate is calculated as if there was a consistent room temperature of forty thousand parts per million. In reality, the CO2 would naturally try and disperse as quickly as possible, so conditions would not be consistent. Uh, CO2 will do everything in its power to find its equilibrium and follow the path of least resistance. Dispersion maps are based off of an explosion at ground level, in reality, the pipe would be buried, which would alter the dispersion data. Uh, a buried pipe would be less dangerous than a ground level rupture. The studies were conducted assuming knee-high or less, knee-high or less, grass or crops. Uh, tall corn has shown to significantly impact the travel of CO2, as do groves and other obstructions, pushing the CO2 farther up into the air. The warmer the air and higher the wind speed, the safer the dispersion will be. Five mile an hour winds and/or high humidity are worst-case scenarios because it doesn't say in, it doesn't stay in the immediate blast location as a no-wind scenario would cause. But also does not move fast enough for the CO2 to disperse at a significant rate. The studies conducted assume twenty mile valve spacing, our farthest valve spacing here in Cassoot County is about eleven miles apart. And we have a couple areas such as around the Des Moines River where valve spacing is only a couple of miles apart. This would affect how much CO2 would leak upon a valve closure. Any detection of a leak would cause the two valves closest to the problem area to close immediately. In the Sotarsia incident, they had a two to three hundred foot drop into the valley versus the height of any drops we have in the Des Moines River area. No terrain study was done for that pipeline when it was installed versus the studies that have been done and are continuing to be done for this pipeline. Other interesting points in the conversation that we had, um, in comparison to the forty thousand parts per million with a two thousand two hundred eighty-eight minute timeframe with a one percent mortality rate, thirty thousand parts per million takes twenty-two thousand eight hundred sixty-two minutes to reach that same one percent mortality rate. Uh, and sixty thousand parts per million takes eighty-nine minutes to reach that one percent mortality rate. Uh, for comparisons, anhydrous ammonia only takes thirty seconds at forty thousand parts per million for a fifty percent death rate compared to twenty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight with CO2. Methanol takes sixty-six minutes at forty thousand for a fifty percent death rate. Uh, there were a couple of other comparisons that I didn't get written down. Um, there are three valves within two miles of Irvington due to the state study placing Irvington as a quote-unquote high concentration population area. There is a shelter-in-place study, um, that they are going to release to us, uh, but they haven't, haven't done so yet, or I haven't received an email on that. Um, this was something they were willing to release to us. And pertains to a situation of someone in the sixteen hundred foot guillotine rupture risk area and the CO2 gets in their house. After two hours of exposure, the oxygen levels in the home were at nineteen point three. Normal being nineteen point five to twenty point zero, so would be largely unnoticed according to Summit. Uh, when asked about sharp bends in the pipes such as ninety-degree angles shown on the map, they said in reality, everything will ideally be a twenty to twenty-five degree bend, which is not fully represented on the map. Less fittings the better, there will not be a ninety-degree sharp turns. And then finally, legislation in Congress is being drafted out of both the Transportation and Energy Committees, uh, building off of the Pipes Act, which will set guardrails for what Finza is going to do regarding CO2 regulation. Congress plans to take both bills produced from both committees and combine them as amendments to the Pipes Act, from what I understand, so. That's, that's all I have for notes and wanted to share, so it was out there.
Shelter in place?
Shelter in place study, if, if you're living in a home within a few hundred feet and the CO2 comes into your home or into your property, um, how to handle that, but I haven't seen that yet, so. Have you gotten an email or anything or?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, um, I haven't received anything, but that's, that's all I have for board report.
Okay, yeah, and that was, that was very thorough, so that's great, um, I won't.
Wrote as much as I could.
Yeah, I won't, I won't harp on the exact same thing, but I did ask them. One of the questions I had asked was if they could produce a map specific to Cassoot County with the valve spacings. Um, as they physically are in their plans versus a twenty-mile standard, um, maximum. To show how that would re-, actually represent the situation, um. They said they could, it might be a little time, but they haven't, I haven't seen or heard anything on that yet either. Um, but yeah, I guess, in general, very informative, um, so, it was
That was a good meeting.
Good conversation, yep. Um, and, and I did get a call from Henry Stone here recently, asking if I had heard any comments from members of the public about his, um, stance on this. And I guess there was an individual that called him upset that nothing was being done at the state level and he had asked if, if people were aware that he was the one that sponsored the bill for the, I think it was ninety percent
Yep.
required for eminent domain and all that stuff, so I mean, he's, he's one that's probably being the most vocal he can, um. And just was gonna highlight that, but, um.
Senator Taylor's probably been the most vocal in the House, or I mean in the Senate.
There's, yeah, there's been several out there as well that are, that are actively working on it, so, I guess. As I said to Senator Guth when he was here, hopefully they can get something accomplished this year since there's more time with the project being delayed, but that's, that's in their wheelhouse, um. I had a NACO EMS working group meeting the other day. We're working on putting together a resolution to take to the legislative conference. Um, those are due in the beginning of January, so we'll have another meeting before that, but, um. We've heard from several different groups that are working on different things, kinda all on the same topic. There's a lot of, there's a lot of similar impacts across the nation as far as how this all gets handled. That was good, um, got a, well, as you guys all saw this morning, Judy dropped off a letter that she is retiring effective February.
February eighty-one?
Yep, February first, twenty twenty-four, so. Work on that with the conference board, um, I'll probably go visit with her after the meeting here or later today. Um, I haven't opened these yet, the one certified mail for workforce development. They sent an updated email with the correct numbers, so I was expecting that, um. I haven't opened this one yet, it's from Bradshaw Fowler Proctor Fairgrave in Des Moines. I think that, was that the law firm we got that public records request from?
No, that was, uh, um. Was it Brinker?
That's right, Brinkley or something.
Yeah, I, I can't think of the name.
Oh, this is, um, ICAP. In regards to, um, so this would be for the costs and interests for repair maintenance work performed prior to twenty sixteen on Drainage District Four. Right, to advise you that ICAP recently completed its analysis of coverage under its risk sharing certificate. For the claim asserted by the Board of Supervisors acting as trustees of the Drainage District, based on the information. ICAP concluded it does not have a duty to defend or indemnify the county or the board of trustees under LDCPA for any such claims for two reasons, um. Tax activity exclusion precludes coverage and the legal liability does not apply due to the same exclusion. So. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? That'd be in regards to the Drain Four, lateral four and lateral two public hearings we held earlier this year, um. Obviously, haven't looked very far through here, that's just the front page, but, um.
Shouldn't file a report, even for?
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll get put in with the record and of course, but, um. The one district, we kept the assessments on for lateral two, lateral four. We took them off, which we'll probably need to evaluate that anyway, and I can talk to Marge afterwards on this. Sort of some of that out, but, does anyone have any thoughts if we should have another meeting here this winter? Let everyone know status and and have that conversation to allow people more time to address it, think through it, or what's everyone's thoughts, I guess?
You had one party that's wanted to take it to court.
Yeah, I think, has, I think that's already been filed.
Yep, couldn't wait and see if they accept it or deny it in court because of the statute of limitations on time. If that holds or doesn't hold.
Yeah, I can talk to our legal counsel on that.
There's much use in having a meeting.
Well, I would say at the very least, the district should be informed of, um, what we got for response, obviously this is public record, but, um, if nothing else, maybe we should put together a letter in some, some fashion to be sent out to everyone, um, on behalf of the board, cause I'm not, I don't, I don't think it should be my responsibility to contact every member of the district, one-on-one, um, I think that should be official from the board as a whole.
I think it could be better out sending a letter out now than to have a meeting because it would get to everyone, a meeting would
Get to a few.
We have a lot of absentee owners.
I agree with that.
So I would, I would compose a letter with
Okay.
Probably the front page of what the attorney wrote included in the letter and send it out.
Yep, I mean, it looks like it's six pages, um, so we could potentially send the front page and, and reference it. If they would like the full document, they could request it, um.
I wouldn't send much more than the front page.
It's a summary at least, so. But yeah, I guess that came here fourteenth, so, in this last week. I think that's, well, like touched on before. As I said at the conference board meeting after our regular meeting last week. Regular meeting last week, I got a phone call from Jamie Cashman or um. ISAC lobbyist and we've been working on the juvenile detention stuff for a while, but that that chart Melissa had was actually one of the documents I had sent to him. For having another conversation, I had given him the document before last year. Couple times when we had conversations at the Capitol, but I sent him the document, so he had it handy. And then um after his meeting. He, we are going to set up another conversation, you know, I think that's. See. Most likely probably Wednesday or Thursday this week, so we'll see. See what more he has for an update in that regard, but. Think that's, I think that's most of what I got here, so. Anything else?
Yeah, I gotta make a correction on my, uh there is no E nine one meeting tonight, we're just doing EMA.
Okay.
Budget, so.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I did confirm that with Derek. I'm just so used to the meetings going right after the EMA that.
Consecutive.
Yep, yep.
Hello. Well, otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Summit?
Okay. Second. Carter, seconds, um. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously.